The second from Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Bous.
Yeah.
Mayor Pete? Yes. Commissioner Roberts? Yes. At this time, we will have public comment regarding the items on agenda, which is the Administrator Search update. Just to reiterate, there's a three-month timeline for the record pieces remain in place of residence. It would be exhausted on public comment for anything on the agenda. Inside City Chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. We will begin now. We will now open it up to the Zoom participants.
I think he's City of Adrian resident. Do send my regrets and my participation for today. I've participated in a Holocaust video workshop for the next three days. I did review the materials that were sent by Yo and Yo. I did provide feedback to the mayor and to Mrs. Sel directly. And look forward to listening in on the discussion today. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, we will move on to our discussion topic, which begins with and is our Administrator Search update. Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for everyone for being here and hopefully it would stay cool these last few days. My goals for today are to work closely with the Commission to finalize the job posting document and assessment plan. I did receive feedback, as was mentioned, from Commissioner Benkey. And I have some proposed edits that I will be walking through as we go through the documents. I'd also like to finalize the onsite interview dates and review date. I'd like to discuss and finalize a compensation range. I would like to review the strategic planning, high-level overview. I'd like to finalize the questionnaire so that we can launch the survey for that's related to the strategic plan and feedback for the search. And then, most importantly, answer any questions or address any concerns that you all might be having at this point. Anything else I should include by any means? Okay, so then maybe my suggestion would be we could go through each of the documents that were distributed last Wednesday. Thank you so much for Vince and Heather for all your support with logistics as well. So maybe we could start with the search planning document that has the criteria list as well as assessment questions. Sorry for all the extra reading material, but just something for your summer reading list.
What did you say you were starting?
Sorry, I was looking through the documents.
Sure, so it's called City of Adrian City Administrator Rubric. On the top, there is like the list, so it's the criteria, survey questions, video questions, phone interview process and timeline. Like I said, I did want to make a few suggestions to it. So, but maybe to keep, will maybe go in order. So were there any additions or questions about the first criteria, which is municipal knowledge and experience?
I apologize. I'm trying. Which document are we on? This is the old one. Okay, thank you.
Sure, was the short, I know so many documents.
The rubric?
Yeah.
Yep.
Got it. Yep, so first area was on municipal knowledge and experience.
Yes.
Any questions, comments, changes to that section?
It's always nice getting the rubric.
Okay, thank you. Yes, that's right, I want to make sure we're all aligned on what you were. Okay, the next section is communication. I do have an additional bullet, and that is to include strong advocacy skills under the must-have area. Any questions, comments on that section? Next section is human resources acumen. Any questions, comments, concerns? Next section is personal qualities.
We do have a question on human resources. Would evaluating staff be a part of that as well?
I can add that to knowledge of best practices for hiring, training, mentoring, evaluating, and retention.
Thank you.
I'm going to measure strong.
I'm going to.
Oh, you're going to measure strong. That's your first item there. How do we define that?
I think we would be able to tease that out a little bit in the video interviews in terms of when they talk about some of the ways they've implemented things. If they talk about some of the situations, like it was a challenging situation and they had to express strong definitive skills. But I can, I can build that out. I think it's, the context of it is that this position is very hard. You have a lot of different, you have community residents, you have commissioners that have a lot of different priorities. And then you have limited resources. And you have department heads that have their day jobs as well as all the other things that they would like to do if they had all the resources that they can. And so getting someone that is strong in terms of communicating effectively about some of those constraints and can support the staff, but also have difficult conversations when, is needed, I think is the essence around that. So trying to figure out how to assess those skills will come through some of the interviews and seeing the situations people have been in. Like if they've really been tested where they've needed to show strength and have to make difficult decisions and support or advocate or deal with difficult situations will help identify the presence of that skill.
Could it maybe say strong communication skills and, and strength in handling difficult situations? Or maybe something like that?
I like it. So I will change it. But just under personal qualities, right? Was that part of it? The communication part is up above, so. So I'll add personal qualities, strength in handling difficult situations. And then up in communication. Maybe exceptional. So I did add strong, I did add strong advocacy skills, so I think we might be okay there. I thought I'd be able to change it. Anything else on personal qualities? Next, moving on to project management skills. Leadership skills and style. We have lots of great anecdotes that came out through that as well. Last but not least, financial acumen. All right. Thank you. All right, moving on to survey questions. I would like to make one modification to the first question to, so that it'll, instead of being, why are you interested in this role? It would be, why are you interested in this role and in the City of Adrian? Moving on to the video interview questions. I would like to modify question number two. So that from, so it would be, instead of from, how would you familiarize yourself with the City of Adrian, its residents, and the priorities within your first 90 days? I would like to change it to, how familiar are you with Adrian currently? And how would you immerse yourself in the community? All right, I've seen some thumbs up there. It's positive feedback. Any other questions or comments on the video interview questions? Thank you. Next are the phone interview questions. And you would be getting a transcript of those phone interviews when we provide information about the candidates. Next is the timeline. So with your approval, we would post the position by tomorrow with any changes. We would close it on Sunday, July 27th, to allow about a month of promoting it as well as reaching out to candidates that we feel have the right, skill sets, and backgrounds. Then our plan would be to provide to you all a kind of a portal where you can click the candidates that we present in terms of their resumes, references, video interviews, the links there, et cetera. So they'll be able to, a lot of material to review, but hopefully it'll be in a way that's relatively easy to go through. Our goal is to provide around seven to 10 qualified candidates. I'll also be providing you all with weekly updates on the number of total applicants as well as the ones that we feel are, that are qualified or that we are going to explore that further. So you'll get kind of a status updates within. I penciled in Monday, August 4th, to review the candidates in closed session. Most, many candidates do request confidentiality, which is allowed under the Open Meetings Act in the state of Michigan. But once candidates become, go through the process, the rest of the process is in public. The interviews, you all will be in public and all deliberations will be in public.
So at the August 4th meeting, you're going to, we are able to review them? And what, what are we able to do in that closed session?
You're able to discuss candidates and to decide which ones you would like to interview.
Okay.
And then, once we confirm that they're still interested and available, we would provide a press release with the candidates' bios and photos so that the community would then know who the candidates are. That can move forward. So it is a little bit of a tight timeframe between presenting the candidates on Friday. We'll try to get that done in the morning as early as we can. But a lot of candidates will apply kind of at the last minute. So it's a little bit of a, of a busy week, we call it crunch week, to get everything done the best we can and then forward. There might be a candidate or two where they haven't, the background check hasn't come back. So we would add, you know, that information when we got it. But yeah, it is, it would be great if over that Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday morning, you could review the candidates and just have an understanding who you would like to move forward. You don't have to force rank the candidates, but just have a list of who you're interested in interviewing, who you're not interested in interviewing. And then the process to determine who we move forward with was relatively quickly. Sure. And then probably the most difficult thing, aligning on a date for interviews. I love getting the date nailed down now so that we can communicate it to the candidates. So as soon as we have a strong candidate, we let them know what the schedule is so that they can pencil in the date, save it to be impossible. So is there preferences or constraints on Thursday, August 14th, or Friday, August 15th? We can do interviews late afternoon or evening or during the day. I like to have staff panels, which I like to include during the day to reduce, you know, the difficulty for staff. We also love to have a community reception as well in there so that everyone can mingle with the candidates in an informal manner. And then I will get feedback, written feedback from anyone, all the community residents that attend that, as well as additional staff that were maybe not included in the panel, but also will have an opportunity to interact with staff. But for, but the most difficult thing to schedule is for interviews with the Commission. I would love to get a block of four or five hours during that timeframe.
I'm available all day, both those days, every Friday. Thank you.
Are you saying you'd like to split them up into, are you saying you want to split them up into two different days or all of them are in one day?
One day.
That was good.
Yeah.
Commissioner Schwartz, are you, I saw you shaking your head.
I'm, I'm timely scheduled for plenty of those, but that's not the second.
I know the only date that Commissioner Benkey gave me was later on in strategic planning, which I know you saw. So, I mean, I am run a school, so I'm not in school yet. So I'm also available during the day. School hasn't started yet, so.
On Thursday the 14th, I have to be finished by 5:00 p.m., so I can do it at all times. And on Friday the 15th, I'm good all day, heading to the evening if necessary. Probably the same.
Okay. Well, I generally see a stronger community. All things being equal, I generally see a stronger community turnout for a reception on Thursday nights than Friday nights.
Yeah.
Yes, so if we wanted to do Thursday, we could make sure the interviews, we could do interviews in the afternoon so that we're done by 5:00 p.m. Then we could do a community reception from 5 until 7. Yes, and make it open. Great.
Yeah, Crosswell doesn't start until 3:00.
Thank you. That's the most difficult thing you will have to do this morning.
Okay. And in the past, we've had the reception in this room here. So I don't know if Michelle can block that off or have reception that night. Assume there's no meeting going on on Thursday night.
Thank you. And then, second most difficult thing is to confirm the compensation recommendation. So based on experience with recent searches, I recommend a range that I think will give you a variety of options and meet the needs that many of the candidates would have. Compensation has gone up significantly in certain areas because of the small pool of highly qualified candidates and the aggressiveness that many of the communities have been using to pay. City of Portage is a, is a good example of kind of leading the edge where I think four years ago, their salary was $150,000 a year. And then they moved up to $200,000 and just had another increase to 210. So I know when I've done some communities, City of Zalani, Lincoln Park, when we were targeting candidates in the, you know, the salary range was initially around 120 to 130, but many of the candidates that we were reaching out to were saying that they would need 160 or more to make a move. So your criteria are a little bit more flexible because we're not requiring prior city manager experience. So I think that opens up more candidates to come in that might have been department directors that are looking to make a move so their compensation requirements might, are a little bit on the lower end generally. But I want to make sure that we put together a range that's going to provide you with a good group of candidates. Obviously, you'll have the right to negotiate, but we want to make sure that, again, we're not, we're not bringing someone in that where there's going to, there's no chance of success in coming to an agreement. So getting an accurate understanding of your compensation ranges and reporting.
Have you spoken to Heather about the compensation?
I don't know.
Heather, are you comfortable with that range?
Yeah, I am. The position is a contractual position. So I think that you're okay to adopt a level that's higher than what's on our compensation scale for this position. So I think, I think it's, it's fine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Looks good. I think we'll take your advice, expertise.
Thank you. All right, so that takes us through the matrix. The next job, the next document that I'd like to review is the job posting. This was, it says job posting draft. The one change, I have a few changes that I'd like to make based on Commissioner Benkey's recommendation. One change is in after, at the end of the second paragraph, after it's, which talks about like, it says arts and cultural activities or corridor downtown anchored by the Crosswell Opera House, the longest continually operating opera house east of the Mississippi. I would also like to add Adrian has a thriving Latino community. The other change that I would like to make is in the about you section. I would like to add, you are energized by the opportunity to help support a community that has pockets of poverty.
Pockets of poverty?
Yes. Happy to words with that, but the, the essence of what I'm trying to capture is to be authentic about, this is per Commissioner Benkey's suggestion, providing feedback that there are some challenges with poverty and then kind of sometimes authentically capturing those can help people that are very passionate about particular issues or have experience and relevant skills about certain issues get even more excited about the opportunity.
Also, in the nearby universities and training institutions, can we include the Sam Buford Woodworking Institute? Because that's very unique to us.
Sure.
Thank you.
And that's the woodworking institute?
Sam Buford. B-E-A-U-F-O-R-D. Woodworking Institute. Thank you.
Well done. Any other questions, comments, concerns, or proposals? All right. Next is the survey, shifting gears a little bit into the strategic planning process. And this is for the survey, which we've gotten a lot of input on. And we tried to make revisions to that to capture changes. So the revised survey was distributed. So looking for any feedback on that revised survey.
Much better than the first one that I saw, so thank you for listening.
Thank you for your great feedback.
And how are we going to distribute the survey?
I'll be working closely with Heather and Vince to communicate it to residents and the community. So do, through different social media channels, a press release, websites, social media to help get the word out.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I really, really appreciate the first question and various answers because that was really important to me, to make those changes.
Agreed. I mean, slicing, then we could do a lot more of the data analytics to see where the things are. Teamwork makes the dream work. So then the next and last document is titled Strategic Plan. And so I wanted to provide a higher level view of where things are. This process, also per our discussion earlier during Commission meetings, will be flexible a bit. And the timeline will incorporate, you know, some of the aspects we can kind of build and co-create as we go along. Again, the key thing was to get the survey out so that we could also get feedback that would help inform the city administrator search and qualities. But, and once we get that information back, it'll be more clear on what is needed going forward. But I wanted to at least share with everybody kind of a higher level timeline and so that we can kind of continue to work forward. So we will launch the community survey with only a three-week window to allow enough time to, for the marketing opportunity out there and to get responses during this vacation time as well. We would also like to have two in-person community members in the month of July to, or by the time we schedule them, happen in early July, to gather input real-time around the qualities that we've listed in the survey. So I would, my next step would be to can work with Heather and Vince for scheduling and coordinating those two meetings and promoting them along with the survey.
Would you want us there or just community?
Just community.
Okay.
I know you all are very, very busy, so.
Just curious. Okay, thank you.
And then we'll be consolidating that feedback and sharing it with you as well. And the plan would be to provide feedback to you in a report and to work with you to discuss next steps in August. Probably at another meeting similar to this or work session. Then September, starting to take a look at staff capacity. In October, once, you know, the, once the new city administrator is fully on board and acclimated as their feet underneath them a little bit, we would want to start then looking at how do we set the goals and the timeline for achieving these different initiatives based on priorities and staff capacity. And then, once we get that plan in place, we want to support it and communicate it so that there's a strong understanding within the community of where things are. And that we are doing what we can to kind of support it. Because it's, sometimes it's easy to, you know, make a plan and it goes on a shelf somewhere and then other things come up. And so we would want to be that advocate and support to keep these efforts moving along and, and having some of those discussions if, you know, we do run into resource constraints in the moment.
Is there any concern that we're going to be doing all of this while we're onboarding a new city administrator for one? And then, two, we have an election in November where there could be three new people up here. Could be, hopefully not, but there could be.
Yeah.
And there definitely will be one new person up here, one's not running.
I just didn't know if we're working. It's, it's an aggressive timeline to me. And we're, we could have four new people on this board up here.
Yeah, I, I'm comfortable with it in part because we're gathering data that's more long-term. And the goals, and it's also, I've been really building on the strategic plan that was done before. So we're not trying, definitely not trying to reinvent the wheel, but to focus. And after we look at the priorities and staff capacity, we might say, okay, we, you know, there's all this we want to do, but in the next 18 months, it's this. But we capture the data, again, so we know that longer-term vision of where we go and what the community's priorities are. And we either reinforced it or tweaked it from the work that was done in 2023. And we're trying to take what are the most important actionable steps we can, knowing that that, that, you know, the, the Commission will change and evolve and needs will evolve. And then after that 18-month point, then there's a time to figure out, okay, now how do we move forward again based on staff capacity and achievements from some of these goals? And some of the, I can see some, like if there's a major focus on homelessness. a major focus on homelessness, we're not going to solve that in 18 months. But there might be some type of study or research or pilot program that we could do within those first 18 months that would then inform what do we do next? And so, but having that clear vision of where we want to go, I don't think will change too much with the configuration of the commission.
Okay, thanks, Amy.
You're welcome.
Can we just jump back for just a second at the posting draft? Sorry, last second, last second. Applications are requested by July 27th. Is that a hard date or?
It's not a hard, hard date in the sense that if somebody came in after that, we're not necessarily going to exclude them. So it gives us a little bit of flexibility. But it's going to be very hard for us to go through the process with people because it is so extensive. But some people really like the deadline. So we like to give them that so that they understand that if they come in late and the process is already going, which occasionally happens, that people will hear about something later or their employment situation has changed for whatever reason. And so we have had candidates that have applied later. I don't want to ever discourage someone. I want as much information as possible. And because the process, if we don't, if you don't like the candidates or you interview candidates and you don't feel that someone is a good fit, I do like to know if there's anybody out there and I would share that information with you as well. But so it's not an absolute, absolute deadline, but.
At some point, you've got to cut it off to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish on the deadline or on the timeline.
Exactly. Anything else right now? Other questions for me, comments? All right, well, thank you so much for your time. Another change, because I don't want.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other items? All right, at this time, we will have public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and place of residence. When we have exhausted all public comment inside the city chambers, we will then open it up to the visiting participants.
Good morning, Commissioners, Madam Mayor. I'm Aaron Cheshire, City Leader, resident. I'm here this morning to talk about the city's search for a new administrator and why this moment matters more than just filling a position. Yo-Yo is committed to finding someone who works with staff, leadership, and citizens, someone who truly cares about Adrian and its people. This sounds great, but what does this actually mean in practice? Right now, our people are scared. Families are hiding. Children are afraid their parents won't be home when they return from school. Our community, our neighbors, are living in fear because of the ICE raids happening right here in the city, in Indiana. So when we talk about leadership, when we talk about character, we need someone who's not going to just sit behind a desk and manage paperwork. We need a city administrator who's willing to protect the people that live here. We need someone who will look at what's happening and say, no, this is not what safety looks like. To say, no, we will not let federal agencies stare our city apart without a fight. Adrian deserves a solution-oriented leader, someone who understands that public safety means trust, not fear. That real leadership sometimes means standing up to a bigger force to protect the people that you serve. I ask you, when Yo-Yo brings you candidates, don't just ask them about their resumes or their qualifications. Ask them what they'll do when our neighbors are targeted. Ask them how they'll respond when ICE shows up in our neighborhoods without warrants. Ask them if they will be brave for us. Because this isn't just about someone who's going to sit in that chair. It's about what kind of city that we want to be and who is willing to lead us there. Thanks so much.
Hi, I'm Jessie. I'm from the city of Chapelsi. I'm here again representing Hope in Action because of crises we've been speaking about as not being addressed publicly or sufficiently. Just over a week ago, I witnessed a horrifying scene of our community members being forcibly removed from their vehicles by undocumented armed individuals right in our own streets. We called 911. We demanded answers and warrants and tragically, Adrian City Police Officers sat across the street watching the entire landfill, doing nothing to uphold their oath to protect and serve our community. This is unacceptable. No one deserves to be removed from their vehicle without due process, especially while our local law enforcement stands by. The Adrian Police Department and as a city employee, especially the new city administrator, must speak for the vulnerable in our city. Finally, may I remind you that history is a powerful teacher? And when those in power stand idly by during such injustices, the people will take justice into their own hands. Which side of history will you be on? Because I know where we stand.
Hello, my name is Samantha Davis. I live here in Adrian. I've lived here for a couple of years. I moved here to seek independence and safety in a community because I didn't have that warrant list. And I'll pass it here because when you have people without uniforms, without identification, who can just take somebody off the street, people with disabilities are not safe because I'm blind, I could not tell you. If somebody tried to take me off the street, I could not tell you who it was. I could not identify them. And they don't get away with it because the police are setting a precedent where that is not spoken out loud. I'm not, you know, illegal, I'm a citizen. But people don't necessarily know that evidence or they could just decide for whatever nefarious purpose to pretend that they're an ICE agent. But because people are so used to ignoring that happening in front of their face, they wouldn't speak out if it were happening to me. So I don't go anywhere by myself. I don't go for walks by myself. I don't go out by myself because I feel like I'm safe. So we're not creating a sense of fear and violence and a lack of safety only for people who are from elsewhere. We're creating that for people in our own communities as well. And we have to stop.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Lewis and I'm from Addison, Michigan. But of course, most of my shopping is done here in Adrian and I've grown up in this community. I was also a witness on June 14th as we were setting up to practice our First Amendment rights and got a text from a friend that I'd just found the road and I told her to be back in a lot there was ICE. Went there just to record because I didn't know what else to do. And the sounds that I heard is staying with me more than our fast-paced news bits that we are fed through our TVs. So maybe you guys haven't thought about it until we're here again a week later to remind you that a lot of these families are hardworking. They are just trying to do the right thing. They're just trying to live. And while this family was shopping for their daughter's quinceañera celebration party supplies, that was when ICE targeted them, surrounded their car, forced them to get out, which, by the way, the 15-year-old is the one doing the translating for the parents, was her celebration. And as a mother, I cannot imagine how that must feel. I'm scared. I've come to Adrian a lot. And I'm scared to even bring my children because I don't know when we're going to witness this. Because we visit a lot of these communities who have a very rich history, as has been mentioned by Yo-Yo. Sorry if I mispronounced that. A Latin history. And for all that we've understood so far, they are here legally. This president, Mr. Kinkin Ronaldo, he's was here legally, has all this paperwork. And now they're having to do lawyer fees that they don't have because they are, you know, a low-income family whose wife is on dialysis. And now they have legal fees just to make sure he can be back here with his family. And they don't even have that guarantee. And we don't have that guarantee. And I know you guys have been kind at these meetings, but also Adrian not speaking up to let us let us know what is going on, what they're going to do is having to work within our community. Teachers are scared with their students. Mothers are scared. People are scared. It's going to be something you do right there.
Good morning. I am here today not necessarily to repeat the sentiments of other people.
Can you just state your name and place of residence? It's okay, it's okay.
My name is Samara and I live in Manitowoc. But I'm here speaking on behalf of somebody who couldn't be here today during, because of family applications. So I'm just going to read what she wrote because I think it's an important update to the situation everybody here is talking about. Good morning. June 14th, two men were taken here in Adrian. I was there. At the time, I didn't know that my name, but I recognized their faces. A few days later, one of the men's wives found me through social media and added me. A few more days and she messaged me and asked if I could help her. I went to her home, a complete stranger, and she welcomed me in. She sat me down at her table and began to tell me about her husband. He's been part of this community since he was 14 years old. He's now 31. He attended Adrian High School, Siena Heights University, and then started his own business. Together, he and his wife have two young daughters. He sponsors entire pizza parties for their classrooms, meals for their church, and he works hard and he gives back. His business also provides health insurance, insurance that is keeping his wife alive. She's on kidney dialysis and the transplant list. Without coverage, she may have only a year to live. She told me they've made a promise as a family to follow every law and they have. As she spoke, she laid out all of his documents. IDs, work visas, driver's licenses, tax papers, bank account information, attorney letters, proof that he has always complied with every request, that he has done everything right. So what did she need from me? Just this, to speak up, to tell people that her husband is not a stranger or a threat? He is a neighbor, a business owner, a father, a law-abiding member of our community, and he was taken without a warrant illegally. The other man taken that day was his uncle. He was also here 100% legally. But he asked to be sent back to Mexico, not because he did anything wrong, but because he believes the business won't survive and he no longer sees a future here. These agents have broken the law, caused generational trauma, and chased a law-abiding contributing member of our community out of it. So I am here today to keep my promise, to speak, to say clearly that the armed men coming into our neighborhoods are not taking criminals. They are taking the good people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marcy Van Black from Deerville. And I wanted to follow up because I have a real problem with ICE saying that they're snatching up undocumented immigrants. Imagine for a second a high school senior that hasn't walked a graduation yet, being called uneducated because they don't have their official diploma. That's how I see this with the undocumented portion of things. Just because someone hasn't made it through the full immigration process doesn't mean that they're not here legally. Part of the problem here is how lengthy and difficult the immigration process is. Now, we can't fix that today, but we can ensure that our friends and neighbors get due process. My understanding is that the gentleman kidnapped by ICE, and I'm calling it kidnapped because he was abducted, on June 14th had been going through the proper channels, as you've heard, and just wasn't an official citizen yet. However, he's been here since he was 14, had all the proper documentation, and owned a business, yet he can't get a hearing until July 2nd. That's insane. This man should not have been locked up for 18 days because ICE and the current administration, which I'm going to call a regime, doesn't like the color of his skin. APD can definitely monitor things and ensure agents are legit, providing proper credentials and valid license plates for their vehicles. That is part of the due process here. So I'm asking you to please explain what avenues or protocols you are looking at moving forward and when we can expect an answer so that the rest of the community feels safe. Because I'm going to add, following up after some of these women have spoke, I don't feel comfortable coming to Adrian and shopping or getting something to eat at one of the restaurants, not knowing if ICE is just going to show up and try to collect their dishwashers and cooks and everything else. How would I explain that to my young nieces and nephews? So it does not add any safety factor for me, being a legal citizen, to want to come to Adrian knowing that that's something that I'm going to experience. Thank you.
We will now open up public comment to Zoom participants. You will see the time on your screen as well. And for the record, also, please state your name and place of residence. Hearing no more public comment. Are there any Commissioner comments? May I get a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
All the papers say hi, sorry. Hi, it's a morning meeting. This is throwing me off. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.